I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so let's get started. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chair, there are no additions to the agenda.
Anthony, then we'll move on to the next section, the audience inputs. The next item is for audience input for items not on the agenda. So if you have something you'd like to bring forward, you can please come to the podium, state your name and address, and share your question or topic. Are there any audience inputs? All right, then we'll proceed with the consent agenda. We've just got one item on the consent agenda. It is the minutes of the May 27th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Are there any questions or changes to the minutes? All right, I'll make a motion to pass the minutes in the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass. Thank you. Is there any old business? All right, we're moving right along, then we'll go on to the public hearings. There's one topic on the agenda tonight for public hearings, Aspen Fields Land Use Plan Amendment rezoning and plat approval request.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The planning commission is being asked to consider some requests by Aspen Field LLC related to the first phase of approvals for the development of the former City Hall site at 1293 and 1367 145th Street East. The subject parcel also is, contains the site of a former residential property in the southwest corner as well. As Chair Reed said, the requests before the commission tonight are a comprehensive land use plan amendment that would change the land use designation from public institutional to community commercial and high-density residential, a zoning map amendment that would rezone it into conformance with the proposed comprehensive land use plan amendment, from the public institutional district to be one general business district and our four high-density residential district. And then the last request before the planning commission this evening is a preliminary plat approval. The applicant is proposing a preliminary plat that includes four buildable lots, three commercial and one residential. The applicant also applied for a final plat, but that would go straight to the city council, which would review that for consistency with the preliminary plat. The requests are the considerations being made by the commission this evening are both legislative and quasi-judicial in nature. The comp plan amendment is a legislative decision by the planning commission and the city council, meaning that there is broad discretion. The decision should be based on adopted policies and goals and is not limited to strict interpretation of the zoning ordinance. And rezonings are technically legislative, but the commission, in its role, is reviewing rezoning requests for consistency with the comprehensive plan. And then lastly, the plat approval request is quasi-judicial. The planning commission is being asked to review the proposed plat against the requirements of the zoning ordinance specifically related to dimensional standards such as lot width and lot area. So as I said, the site is the former Rosemont City Hall site that had been until recently owned by Dakota County Technical College. It's immediately north of DCTC along County Road 42, between 42 and Conamara Trail, immediately east of the new Lifetime facility, about a quarter mile away from, or quarter or half mile away from Akron Avenue. Zooming in a little bit further to see the parcel boundaries, you can see the City Hall site with an old ball field here. There were some poles that were used for journeyman training. The parcel in the southwest used to contain a single-family home that has been removed from the site. The site is bounded on the east by a high-density residential parcel that the planning commission reviewed approval requests for by DEVCO Development in 2024. As you can see, to the west is Aspen Avenue with Lifetime Facility. North of the site is a medium and high, a medium and low-density residential development separated from the subject parcel by some stormwater infrastructure. So here is the proposed land use amendment. As you can see, public institutional was the, is the existing land use designation for the site that was adopted with the 2040 comprehensive land use plan in, in 2018. It is being proposed to change that to high-density residential and community commercial. As I said, there would be one parcel for the high-density residential development and then three commercial parcels. There would be two retail strip centers and a daycare facility. Zooming out for a little bit more context, so you, the commission can see the proposed amendment in relation to the surrounding area. As you can see, to the east is that high-density residential land that is owned or is being developed by DEVCO, and to the west would be the commercial areas around Akron and 42. There's some support in the comprehensive plan for the proposed amendment in Chapter Three land use. It contains goals and policies calling for the support of commercial development. Just the proposed amendment does contain land for commercial development in that area, as well as appropriate transitions between different land uses. The proposed residential land would be a buffer between the more higher-intensity commercial, as the commission's probably aware, commercial does generate more traffic and trips than residential developments. Chapter Four, the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan, has some policies and goals related to providing a mix of rental and ownership opportunities that would create lifestyle housing in the city. It also calls for locating high-density residential along Collector and Arterial Streets, of which Conamara Trail and County Road 42 are. And then it should be located in conjunction with commercial development and transit availability. And to that last point, MVTA is expand, extending their service from its terminus currently at the Rosemont Park and Ride to a new station at the Dakota County Technical College. Building off of those comments and support in the comp plan for the proposed amendment, staff understands that there is a lot of residential development, particularly in the Akron 42 area, residential development within high-density residential buildings. There is a desire for more commercial development in that area. It's something that we hear regularly, the council hears regularly, it comes up on social media that there should be more services in retail in that part of the building, or in that part of the city. Unfortunately, commercial is slow to develop in that part of the city. Part of that reason is that there is a lot of land that will not be developed for residential uses that would create that customer base that commercial developers are looking for in that area. The, the map before you, the area outlined in red, is all land that would not ever develop for residential. To the east of the site and northeast is land owned by Flint Hills Resources for them to maintain as a buffer area. South of the site is DCTC, while it does generate traffic and provide some service, it doesn't replace residential or rooftops, so to speak, in the vicinity. Further south and west, that land will likely develop for residential uses at some point, but Dakota Aggregates owns a lease or has a lease on that part of the city for aggregate extraction and mineral extraction until 2040. So when a commercial developer looks at a site to develop, they kind of look at the whole pie. And what we're working with in this part of the city is maybe half of the pie. So in order to fill that gap, providing land for higher-density residential in the vicinity of the commercial areas can hopefully speed that commercial development in that part of the city and give those residents the goods and services that they are requesting and need and the city staff and council understand. So here's the proposed rezoning for the site. It's consistent with the proposed comp plan amendment, changing it from the public institutional zoning district to general business district and high-density residential district. As I said, the preliminary plat proposes four parcels, three commercial parcels, one would be a daycare, two commercial strip developments, and then one multifamily housing parcel. There's one outlot being proposed that would contain the stormwater infrastructure for the site. As you can see on the table there, the proposed parcels all meet the minimum standards for the proposed zoning districts considered or proposed by the applicant. So this is the actual plat being proposed. In the northeast would be the high-density residential. There is a pipeline easement running through it diagonally. This may be familiar to some of the commission who reviewed the DEVCO development. That site had a significant constraint as well. On the western portion of the site are two existing wells that a buffer of 50 feet must be maintained around the entire well and must remain undisturbed. That'll, I've got a concept plan immediately following this slide that will depict that a little bit more clearly. And then commercial lots here along County Road 42. In the southeast corner would be where the stormwater is provided. So this is the concept plan that the applicant has submitted, just as a concept to depict what the eventual development of the site will be. Formal site and building plans will need to be reviewed by the planning commission for each parcel as they develop. Therefore, this is more to, to give a general layout. The utilities and streets will be constructed, but the actual positioning of the buildings and parking lots and things like that will likely shift somewhat when we receive a final complete submittal package for that. But access into the site will come from three points. There's an access on Aspen Avenue to serve solely the daycare center, and then there is an access off of Aspen Avenue a little further south that would pull on a private east-west road and then connect with a parking area for the apartment building. The other access point would be up on Conamara Trail, so creating a circular traffic flow through here. These round circles, as I said, these are the existing wells. No development can occur within those areas. It must remain untouched. And so when the removals occur on the site, you can see the stand of trees here will remain and will not be removed as part of this development. The, the other areas that will be removed are any onsite trees, the existing buildings and paving, and the ball fields there. The engineering for the site, as I said, it will be private street. This is a, this engineering plan is a little older than the more recent concept plan, so you can see the access up here, but the parking lot and things are not depicted on this as it's not a concept plan. It's more for the engineering piece, which sewer and water would come into the site from existing stubs in Aspen Avenue. Stormwater will exit or will connect to the system in the southeast corner here. A sidewalk is being recommended to be required along the eastern side of Aspen Avenue as part of this, extending up to the northern boundary of the subject property. And then just lastly, note that there's some easements that need to shift, shift to be adjusted on the final plat to be in alignment with the existing infrastructure and proposed infrastructure. Also note, the existing wells were built by the city for the University of Minnesota. They own some rights to those that the city will be acquiring through the quitclaim process as development in this area proceeds. Staff is recommending a fee in lieu of land dedication for the site. The site is served by three parks, Abbey Field to the west, Tallimore to the east, and Greystone to the north. That fee in lieu would be for the commercial $4,000, $40,500. For the residential, because we don't know the actual number of units until the site and building plan comes through, just a general ballpark of 150 units at $2,000 a unit would come to $375,000. Parks and Recreation staff is recommending that those fees be collected with the building permits rather than with the plat. Also note, as we're talking about parks here, there is a future trail connection that the county is planning. It's an underpass below 42 that would connect the Lifetime Fitness area with the area to the south of County Road 42. And because there will be trail infrastructure in that area, staff is recommending that the developer grade in or bench a trail along County Road 42 that can be part of the county's overall trail system as that gets built out. So as I said, this isn't the final step for development. The applicant still needs to come back for preliminary, or the final plat going to council. And then also, if a planned unit development, master development plan is needed for any deviations from the code, that would come back to the planning commission as well. And whether or not that is needed, site and building plan approval is required by the code with a public hearing before the planning commission. So staff is recommending approval of the three requests by the applicant. Those are laid out here before you. One change to note from the recommended actions in the staff report is that condition D of the third action changes the wording so that the developer should install the sidewalk up to the northern boundary of the subject property rather than all the way to the Conamara Trail, simply because there's some city-owned land there that the applicant would not be expected to build a sidewalk along. That's something that the city would do through its capital improvements program. So I'm happy to take any questions. The applicant is present. You can speak to more of their business-focused questions the commission may have, operations, timing, things like that.
Thank you, Anthony. I've got a few questions, but I always go first sometimes, so.
I'll start with the other commissioners.
I've got a question, Anthony. The lot that we see is a square lot, but it looks like the north, or sorry, it would be the, yeah, it'd be the northwest corner there is chopped off a little bit by the road.
Correct.
How is that? So the, is there some sort of easement across that corner?
That'll be dedicated as right-of-way on the final plat.
Okay.
Hi, oh, go ahead.
So what are, what are the rules with respect to that pipeline coming across? Because I know we had issues about what could be built with that on the property that's just to the east. And I'm looking at, you know, what we had before the, with the conceptual plan that came up. So it's not this one that's on here, but the one that included the parking lot and things like that.
Yep.
Is a parking lot something that can be built on that? Because I think before we said we, there couldn't even be any trees or anything on it. So I'm just, I don't remember what the rules are for that.
So I would defer a little bit to the applicant because they've been in touch with the pipeline owner. I do know that that pipeline is, it's vacated. The easement is not vacated, but the pipeline is not in use. And I think there may be some conversations about vacating that pipeline easement to allow them better use on there. Now, that being said, it's staff's experience that sometimes parking lots are allowed over easements, or sometimes it's only roadways or driveways that are just crossing at a perpendicular angle. So I would defer to the applicant on how they, any conversations they've been having about that pipeline. Certainly, it's a constraint that they'll have to take into account when they, they create their final site plans.
Understood. Thank you.
That was actually my concern too. I remember something similar where it involved the pipeline. And again, yeah, you, you couldn't even build anything over it. It had to stay by itself with no structures, no anything over it. So that's, that's my question as well, is how do we handle that pipeline aspect unless, like you said, they dissolve the easement and then it's a moot point?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yeah. And just to reiterate again, when the final site and building plan does come in, they'll have finalized what the site plan would look like and, and taken into account any constraints like that.
Okay.
So, yes, but it is a major constraint in this part and all over the city, to be honest, for a lot of developers.
Just had one question. So like, on the 2040 comprehensive plan, are you saying that it currently still shows as kind of public institutional?
Correct.
And then how come that, what, was it just because it was unknown at that point? What was the possibilities with that land?
Yeah. So in 2018, when the city was going through the comprehensive plan update process, Dakota County Technical College had not given any indication that they would be selling that piece of property. So the comp plan is reflective of the existing use on the site. They had been, they have been using it up until recently, but when they made the decision to dispose of the property, you know, now it can be changed to a future use. So it does allow for a little bit more, I guess, creativity in that area.
And then I guess follow-up question is like, and I, I heard you outlay kind of the reasoning on why to kind of blend this with a mix of high-density with commercial. But as we grow as a community, are we, are we going to maybe regret not having that all commercial?
Well, certainly that's a consideration that the planning commission and the city council can, can make. It's staff's recommendation that the, the proposed mix on that site is in, meets the policies and goals of the comp plan for the different uses on there. I think what we're seeing is that, like I said earlier, that commercial is slower to come. The commercial landscape is a lot different than it was 10, 15 years ago. So land that was guided for commercial development is probably excessive for the reality of what would develop. So there is land to the east that is still guided for, for commercial. So there is that land available over there.
Yep.
The subject property is about 10 acres. The land to the east is about 20 acres, maybe a little bit more. Just for reference, the land southwest of Akron and 42 is about 11 acres. And we know that a, a company tied to Jerry's Foods purchased that. Cub Foods is on a site that's about 10 acres, give or take. So there is significant land over there that is available for
Okay.
further commercial development. It'll be more attractive to commercial development when Audrey Avenue extends north and connects on the east side of this map here between Conamara and 42, and ultimately has a signal light over there. So, you know, I, I think it's staff's opinion that we have enough
Enough.
right now. But ultimately, it's the planning commission and the council's call on that.
I have one other question, if I may, on, like you talked about the future and stuff. If we could go back to the picture that had the star with a circle around it, sort of that I, yeah. So I think you had said before that the area bounded in red, you know, is essentially off limits for residential. And then we said, you know, the area in the southeast, southwest corner there would be residential at some point. What do we have along 42 here? Because I think, is it, so if we look on the north-hand side of 42, between 42 and 52 there, like that stretch, is that owned by, that's not owned by Flint Hills there, is it?
This is owned by Flint Hills here.
Okay.
This is owned by Meta right here.
Okay.
So it's, it is kind of
So it's not for residential?
No.
But it'll be, it'll be, that part there will be developed, but not residential? I understand. I misunderstood before.
Yeah. And that's not to say that development that isn't residential doesn't have some benefit, but really, when we talk to commercial developers, they're looking for residence.
They're looking for rooftops. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I think most of the questions I had have been answered, but kind of building on the discussion around the split of that plat between commercial and high-density residential and kind of, you know, what is the right mix there? This, thank you. It's exactly where my head was going. So just conceptually here, especially on the, you have the south end there, the two retail spaces, I'm kind of, I can't, it's hard for me to picture what size of retail. Like, is there a comparison you've got in mind? Like, what, just be like a couple, small?
Yeah. So I guess I would say something like where Jimmy John's Pizza Hut, I think, is China Walk over by Cub Foods.
There's like four studios or five, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. Three or four bays, maybe five. It depends on how big they are. That's kind of what I would expect to develop, that site to develop.
At times two, right?
Yeah.
Because there's two of them there? Okay. And then the northwest corner, it's just conceptually daycare, right?
Right.
It doesn't, okay. Because we have several daycares that have gone in, so, okay.
Yeah. And, and because the applicant did say daycare, that's why I say daycare. I would defer to them and, and where that's at in their, their process and how firm that is for them.
Got it. Okay.
So I have a quick question, Anthony. This is about the street. It seems like no new opening from 42, right? Because they're only taking right on the Aspen Avenue.
Right.
So one opening for those three properties, right? Because the daycare will only have a separate opening from Aspen.
Yep.
And the apartment building will have two openings, one from that new street and another one from Conamara Trail.
Yep.
Now, looking at this image, it seems like there is technically no stopping someone, a traffic coming from Conamara, they're using their parking lot to actually access those other properties.
Correct.
So is there, do we have any sort of an agreement? Will there be penalized signs in the future?
So it's all private. It would be up to the apartment project to sign, you know, no through traffic or do their own sort of enforcement of that. But because it's all private, it would not be something that the city would necessarily limit from a, from a public road standpoint.
Okay.
That's a good question too. Can I, are you?
Yep.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
You can, you can ask.
Um, a good question too about the exit off of Aspen onto 42. Is that going to be, would that be a right turn only?
Yeah, Aspen is right in, right out only. Yep.
And Aspen is already there, right?
Yes, correct.
It's the, the one next to Lifetime.
Correct.
That's not very zoomed. There you go.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay. So let's see here. Seeing this as a public hearing item, we're going to open up the public hearing. Before we do that, has there been any written comments that have come in?
No.
Okay, okay, great. So we'll open up the public hearing. If you've got a question, you can come to the podium, state your, your full name and address. We'll take all those questions, and then once the public hearing's closed, we'll answer those questions. First, I'd like to ask if the applicant would like to come forward.
Good evening. My name is John Anderson. I'm representing Aspen Field LLC. And there's a second property, that's Monarch Properties LLC, that's also part of this application as well. That's the little former house that was in the southwest corner of the site there. So yeah, a few of the questions, I can probably use some clarification on the site plan layout items. To start with, with the daycare, we have been working with an active buyer for the daycare. And that site that you see on the site plan has been kind of designed for that, that applicant. And we do have a letter of intent in place, and we are working on finalizing an purchase agreement. As we speak, it's kind of going hand-in-hand with the approval process. And we didn't want to get too far ahead of the game with the purchase agreement until we knew we were kind of going down the road with the approval. So we do have a daycare, and that layout is, you know, it is a site plan that could adjust, you know, a little bit as we get into the final site and building plan. as we get into the final site and building plan review, but it's going to be something similar to what you see there. As for the two commercial structures down there and the high-density site, we have multiple people we are working with on the high-density property right now. I know staff has asked about a 55-plus. There is one potential buyer that would have 55-plus apartment-type structure there. At this point, we can't commit to that because we don't have a signed agreement, but we are actively negotiating as we speak right now. So there is some discussion on that end. And as we finalize, you know, the plaque gets done, our goal is ultimately to build kind of the entrance road and the, you know, the access points and things like that. And then individual site layout would be built after a site building plan review is done for each individual property. We would submit that and then the details would be looked at at that time. But overall, the main east-west road coming off Aspen Avenue would be, look to be constructed so that main roadway and utilities and things are in place. There's two commercial buildings in the south. The reason they're separated is there's a water main that runs between there right now. So we couldn't run that water main over that building, so we had to have two separate structures. It actually worked out pretty well with the, the way the property laid out with that one parcel being in the south corner or the southwest corner, it actually kind of fitted onto the parcels and kind of worked out pretty well that way. As far as the pipeline easement goes, I know there were some concerns about that. The structure in the daycare and are in the high-density site and then the parking lots are in there. We have negotiated kind of a verbal agreement at this point. We are working on finalizing that, getting something in writing, but since that line is vacated, we could technically vacate the easement and dispose of that line, but it's a pretty high cost to dig up that line based on the disposal of a former pipeline like that. So what they've verbally said is we can place the parking lots over that easement and we can encroach on one side of the easement up to 10 feet from the center, the center line. So as you see, those two corners of the building are roughly 10 feet off that center line of the easement. And that's what we're basing on. Obviously, any details that would be adjusted or need to be, as we go forward, would be, be done in that site plan review for each individual site. As far as the commercial versus high-density, we did look at that and have discussions with staff and are in between ourselves. And one thing that we have to look at here is Akron and 42 has got the stoplight. That's the main intersection in this area. Aspen Avenue does have access onto 42, but it's a three-quarters intersection, so kind of like a right in, right out. So it does limit traffic flow to some extent into this location. So we did front the commercial along 42 and Aspen, but that kind of northeast corner of the site, which is adjacent to another high-density zone property to the east, seemed to make sense. And access to that really comes off of Conamara is, you know, a good access point for us. And I know the site to the east has an access coming off Conamara like that as well. So that's why we decided to look at that and this is kind of what we came up with. As far as that goes, we're looking for approval and I'm here to take any questions. And our next step would be, there are some engineering comments and things that we are working through right now that we received from city staff here about a week ago. And once we have that updated, we'll be back, hopefully at city council for approvals and then the final plan as well. And we would like to get this recorded and construction going on that street yet this year. So with that, I'll take any questions if you have any, so.
Thanks. Are there any more questions from commissioners?
I appreciate you addressing the pipeline question, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any others that would come, like to come forward with questions or comments?
I have questions. Melvin Evans, I live at 14349 Alderway. Can I use this? I can show you like my backyard.
Yeah, you can use the up and down arrows.
So I am... Oh, can't, I can't, I need a pointer, but the house-
You can use the mouse down there, too.
Oh, okay. So I live here. Oops, sorry if you guys saw that. So this is me. You would have saw me here last year, but I was out of town for a work event. So a couple of questions. First one is for, is it Anthony?
Yeah.
And we'll take your questions.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, we'll take your questions then. After we close the public hearing, we'll answer all those, okay?
Got it. So the question was regarding what, I don't really feel like it was answered. The public interest was zoned for now. He said that it wasn't available to be sold until like 2018, 2020, but I didn't really get any clarification on what that actually is zoned for now, what, what can go there now. Second question was, in referencing half the pie being able to be used, how many residents are we looking for in Rosemount to be commercial-worthy, I would ask? Right, how many people are we looking to bring in? Or how many apartments need to be built for commercial properties to be willing to come in and put in the things that a lot of residents are asking for? Another concern as a resident is just the amount of apartments going in there now. There is one that just got approved last year that's directly east, right? There are two, there's one just finished, I think it's called the Croft, across from Lifetime. There's another one being ground recently, right next to the Croft, across the street on the, just north of Quick Trip. That one just got built and finished last year. Now we're putting another high-density resident, another one right there. My concern is traffic. I have a four-year-old daughter, you know, there's a new school being built up down the street that we are looking forward to going for, for elementary school. You know, I think of like Alice Berry Park, my daughter calls it the zip line park. We bike there with the amount of people that were coming, bringing in. My, I know there's a roundabout going up there next year, but still with, you know, a four-year-old biking, a lot of kids biking, a lot of, I'm sure you guys have seen, I feel like every household, every other household has an e-scooter right now. All the kids zooming up and down. That's a concern with the more apartments that we have, more traffic that's bringing into that area. Is there any, so my question is, sorry, is there anything in addition to the roundabout that's going to make it easier to access the west side of Akron? I know we have the underground tunnel for going up to Aspen Fields, but I mean, Alice Berry is a great park right there. I... Personal preference, you know, I see, I see, I hate here daycare and I think of another daycare. With, but with, you know, there was, I had heard, and this might not be true, there's a, you know, when those leases end in Amber Fields, I was always under pressure that I was, you know, when we first moved in, we were told, you know, in the next five, 10 years, there's going to be another 5, 10 houses, 5,000 to 10,000 houses that go over that land. So I was surprised to see the pie chart where that's not able to be residential when I was told that it's all going to be residential eventually when those leases end. So I don't think we should just focus on, hey, that not, might not be ready until 2035 or 2040. They are going to be available eventually and all of it's going to be residential. And then, of course, is there anything that we're going to do in addition to commercial? I don't see Quick Trip as a commercial retail store for individuals living there now. Lifetime was a great addition. It's expensive, right? It's 350 bucks for husband, wife and two kids. But I think that was it. Yeah, noise concerns, traffic. And then eventually, just to repeat, if there's going to be anything done with the train, like a bridge or something for the train, with more people to bring in, that's more traffic. You know, that train right now, you get stuck at it's like 10 minutes, depending on the length of the train. We add another 5, 10,000 people or just another couple thousand people from the apartments. I mean, that's going to back up even further. And then especially with this gain being blocked off now, can no longer go left there to avoid those traffic incidents. I just felt like 42 is just going to be a traffic hog, like a little mini highway. But that's it. Do I have to take any questions?
Thank you.
Sorry. I just like ramble.
Are there any more questions from the audience?
Good evening. So my name is Ashley Lopez and I live at 14371 Aspen, which is the corner house, not far from him, that is Aspen and Conamara. And Lifetime has been okay coming in, but I will say the amount of traffic that Lifetime alone has brought in has created immense safety issues on my corner. There's one stop sign and nobody stops there. They all whip through it. And as he said, there's so many e-bikes, there's so many bicyclists, there's kids, that's parents are walking. And if you add a multi-residential housing and commercial and you say it's private and you're not going to control how the traffic comes in and out of that area, you're asking for fatalities. I have so many young neighbors by me. My daughter's 14, but even her running out with her friends playing soccer, the ball goes out, nobody's stopping for them. So if you make this more of a traffic area, how are you going to protect the kids and the older people and just people in general? And what kind of commercial properties are going in here? Because again, daycare, but we literally just got another daycare on top of all the other daycares that are on this road. So we're going to end up with like six daycares on 42 in like a two-mile stretch. But what are the other two commercial sites? Is it going to be like a fast food? Because I guarantee, I don't want to smell that. It's going to bring down all the property values of our homes just smelling like a grease pit. Or is it going to be, you know, a coffee house? Like what kind of commercial properties is this? And what is it going to do to our property values? Because a lot of us that bought out there, bought out there because it was not developed and we liked the suburban aspect of it. And we didn't buy in the city because we didn't want to be on top of those buildings. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vesta and I live at 14336 Alderway. Neighbors, how's it going? So I just wanted to address same concerns they've already spoken on behalf, but I think most of the area that we live in currently all have the same idea that the traffic is getting pretty insane. I haven't necessarily seen like a safety issue yet. It's going to be tragic when it does happen. I will say the current infrastructure that we have right now, I don't think it supports what is going in already. So we should lean towards more commercial vice, putting high-density apartment complexes in since we already have three that have gone up. So just wanted to add to it and say that I concur with the neighbors we have and thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Hall is in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Anthony, do you want me to run down the questions or you want to kind of hit them in a certain order?
You know, I can, I can get started and if I miss something, let me know. But I'll just, we'll start at the top. What can be built there now? A city hall, a school. You know, it's public institutional is what it's zoned and guided. That's what can be built there now. That's, and part of the reason it didn't change, as I said earlier, is that there was no anticipation that Dakota County Technical College would be relieving itself of that land. So that's, that's typically how the comp plan works. If there's an existing use, that's what the land is designated as, rather than changing it and making something non-conforming. So, so what could be there, built there now would be public institutional uses. It couldn't be commercial, it couldn't be residential. That's, that's what it could be. How many residents are needed to support commercial? That's, that's a tricky question because each commercial type use does use different standards for how many people it needs in a certain area. A pizza hut is different than a dentist office. So I can't speak to that specifically. I will say that the land southwest of the site, down here, so, so Amber Fields has 1,900 housing units. And that's including three high-density areas and, and single-family and townhomes. So this is 1,900. So there isn't 5,000 to 10,000 more people coming up in the southwestern portion of the area. And I would, I would defer to a commercial developer on if that proximity would be serving these areas or if we would be looking at more commercial development down on 46, which is a very likely scenario also as we move through the comp plan process. Let's see. I can follow up about future improvements for helping to make pedestrian crossings along Akron Avenue. That's a question for our Public Works and Engineering Department. I don't know off the top of my head, unless Adam, you have more information on that at-
I know the resident did reference the roundabout that is planned for construction here shortly at Conamara and Akron. So that's, that's one, but I don't have any other specific ones to note as a part of that. Anthony, unless you wanted to mention the additional, excuse me, with the underpass and the connection, the greenway that runs through that area?
Yeah, yeah, but specifically to cross Akron Avenue, I don't, I think the trail system being built out, allowing pedestrians to cross Akron Avenue at a signalized intersection will be helpful when that gets done as well. That would be a county-driven project, but the city would work with them.
Clarifying question. So when the traffic circle, are there any plans to have any public reviews of how that's going to be laid out? I know it's a county project, but how, how we get input to maybe see how they're going to plan out safety for the crossing? Because I think in the zip line park, as my kids called it too, but kind of going west there, how, how will the public have input or be able to see how that's going to look?
I think those are all completed and the design is finalized for that already.
At the county level?
At the entire-
Which is to say it wasn't, it wasn't a city project, it was a county project.
The county drove the engagement on that one, yeah.
Just kind of more on that. So when we actually do see PUDs for these projects when they come forward, as part of that, we usually review traffic studies and some of the traffic flows and sidewalks and so on, right? So there will be another opportunity to see more detailed plans that are specific to the specific projects that are going in here, right? Along with projected volume and so on. Is that correct?
That's correct. They would be traffic generation analyses for, for the sites. The Conamara Trail is built and designed as an east-west collector that would be relieving traffic off of 42. So it is built to handle a traffic load. I think there are improvements along the way that can improve safety along Conamara, for sure. And will, you know, our traffic safety committee will continue to work with residents as they raise concerns for specific areas within the city, not just this one here.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, Anthony, too, on that, the planned connection for Conamara to the east is that Conamara continues to the east and then connects at 140th at Blaine there, too. So that will continue eastward, as Anthony said, as a major collector through that area.
All the way west to Blaine, essentially?
East, correct, yes.
Any more commercial planned? Okay, so this is a good question because it seems like a lot of people think the city decides what businesses come into commercially designated land. The market really is the key driver on this. The city can support certain types of businesses, like the city has with restaurants and things like that to get, to get them to locate out there. But if something is guided and zoned for commercial uses, the city can't say, you know, we want a Burger King but not a Panera or vice versa. Just like we can't say that unless we eliminate the opportunity for any dentist offices or daycares, we can't say, you can't build a daycare here because it's zoned for that use. I would leave it up to the daycare developers on how they decide to site. Obviously, there are a lot of them here. They see a lot of demand. We hear from the public at public hearings talking about their young children. There is a demand for daycares and that's reflected in the daycares being built. The land immediately southwest of Akron Avenue, as I said, is owned by Jerry's Foods. It is in, staff would anticipate that it would be a grocery store at Akron and 42. So there are those commercial developments. You know, there are things that are out there waiting. It is, Jerry's isn't building now. They're waiting for more houses, I would assume. Let's see. We talked a little bit about safety along Conamara. Leaning more towards commercial versus residential. Commercial generates a lot more traffic than residential development. Even an apartment that would have 150 units will produce less traffic than commercial development on that site.
that's what a developer has chosen to propose as a part of their application. So this isn't a staff decision, this is what a developer who has, um, and, you know, we can certainly a- address this question to the developer if he so choose to, has, has done their own assessment of the market and has determined that this is a feasible, um, application for them to proceed with.
The only other question I, I noted here, it's sort of tangential, but the train question. I know there's some discussions, I don't know how much you can offer on that, Anthony, but.
I don't have a lot to offer on the train. I think Brenda, or sorry, Commissioner Rivera, you know, you know.
Well, but there's, there's discussions, right, of potentially doing something to alleviate some of the flow at three further, further north there.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Anthony, I, I understood the question or the comment at the intersection of Highway three and forty-two, if that was the, the, the intent of, of that. And, um, eventually there, there are plans in, in place and the actual construction is unknown, but, uh, there will be a flyover as a part of that. Um, it is a, a conflicted intersection. There is a lot of, uh, traffic that does have some, some backups and some other conflicts with just those different movements there, but, um, over time, there is a planned, uh, flyover bridge that would be constructed, forty-two flying over Highway three, um, east-west there and over the, the rail line.
And again, that's not a city project, that's a county-state project with the railroad.
Correct.
We're just happy to live here.
Yes, yes. And my apologies, I, I, I thought the, the question was about the railroad crossing on Akron.
Right, that's what I thought too. And, and I can answer that. That is a main line that the U.P. and Canadian Pacific share, um, trains going south to Northfield and it's forty miles per hour. So, um, that train track's been there a long time and it's gonna continue to be there. We just have to be safe about it.
Yeah, and the reality is Rosemount developed originally as a railroad town. Now, you can see it by the, the location of Fleegles, uh, downtown. Uh, farmers would come, bring their, their, uh, crops and commodities and they would be loaded up on the trains right, right near downtown.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony. Um, are there any more, uh, comments or questions, discussion from commissioners?
I just, um, because I've been on the commission for a few years, I go back to the star page, please. So I think people forget that, that current land that we're talking about tonight, that is actually the center of Rosemount. So that's where the, basically the middle of, of the city is, is located.
And that's where the city hall was put right there.
And that's where the city hall was. So what I think people, uh, forget about is that all of the city development so far has all been in one's particular area. And we would be naive to think that the city is not going to expand and the only way to expand is to actually head out to the eastern part. And I know as a landowner, if I want to travel to, you know, a gas station or, you know, go get my nails done or whatever I'm gonna do, I don't necessarily wanna have to go all the way into the other part of Rosemount when we can develop certain areas of the eastern part of Rosemount where more houses will be built. That's just part of the comp plan. So with that in mind, I, I support more, um, business development there, commercial use so that the people that are starting to move in that part of town can have amenities as well and they don't have to go to just one part of Rosemount to have that. And I also, um, support the fact that, I don't know if, if he was serious about a fifty-five-plus community, but, um, you know, I know we have a couple on Highway three and we do have a lot of high-density going in, in this particular area, but I haven't really heard of any other fifty-five-plus. So that to me is, uh, another welcome addition to the community that is probably needed. So I would support the, the change in, in zoning it.
Any other comments? Would you like to make a motion?
There's a lot of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, good question. So Anthony, can you, uh, I know there was some tweaking to the.
The tweaking was done on the recommendation, right?
Right.
This is correct?
This is correct on the screen, yeah. This, the one in the staff report is, is the older version. Got it.
All right, I would make a motion to recommend the city council approve an amendment to the city's comprehensive land use plan to change the designated land use on the site from P-one, public institution, PI, I'm sorry, public institutional to CC, community commercial and HDR, high-density residential.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, move by Commissioner Rivera, second by Commissioner Bednar. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Uh, somebody like to make a second motion?
I'll move to recommend the city council to approve a rezoning of the site from PI, public institutional, to B-one, general business and R-four, high-density residential, subject to the approval of the amendment to the city's land use plan.
Is there a second?
Again.
Uh, move by Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Arnob. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Uh, somebody like to make a second motion?
I'll move to recommend the city council to approve a rezoning of the site from PI, public institutional, to B-one, general business and R-four, high-density residential and the following, uh, lettered A through D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Reed, uh, second by Bednar. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, and I think that is it for the, uh, public hearings today. Um, are, is there any new business? And there's no new business, Mr. Chair. Um, then we do have a discussion item, um, discussion on potential amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, so this will be a little more informal with just discussion, just to get, um, comments from the commission regarding a couple potential amendments to the existing zoning code. Uh, so just a little bit of a summary, so staff would like to receive feedback from the commission on a few potential amendments to zoning ordinance, which I have laid out. Um, one of them will be eleven-six-eight accessory uses N through Z. Uh, another one will be eleven-six-three principal uses, commercial. And then the last point of discussion will be eleven-seven-six landscaping, screening and buffering standards. Uh, so that first, um, potential discussion point, um, will be in regards to, um, accessory uses, which is found in, uh, section eleven-six-eight. Uh, so currently there is a discrepancy between what the city code requires for outdoor dining areas in the administration of liquor licenses and then also what's in the zoning code, um, which the zoning code requires. Um, staff would like feedback on bringing the zoning code into alignment with the liquor licensing requirements as it relates to fencing and barriers. So I have outlined it in red, um, so you can see on the left-hand side on currently in section three-one-fourteen, outdoor patios and decks. Um, the first condition shows that patios or deck, um, areas must be compact and contiguous to the licensed premises and then shall be quarantined off by appropriate fence wall or staff monitor as approved by city staff. And then currently shown in section eleven-six-eight within the zoning code, it states, when a liquor license is granted, uninterrupted enclosure is required and the enclosure shall only have access through the principal building. So we're just looking to update the zoning code portion to be reflective on what we have outlined within, uh, section three-one-fourteen.
So, Mr. Chair, too, just before there's any discussion by the, the commission, um, this is for discussion purposes only this evening. Um, this is not a public hearing. If there's general kind of feedback that staff is looking at the correct things in a, in a way that's acceptable, we would bring this forward in a more formal, formal proposal as a, an ordinance amendment at a public hearing process. So we don't do this a whole lot and I know, um, Chair Reed, uh, just to, to clarify for the group to, from a, a discussion or work session type of approach, um, for this item here, this is meant to be informal, to solicit feedback, uh, question with staff in terms of some of these items that Julia's outlined for us tonight.
Thank you, thank you for that. Thank you, Julia. Yeah, and this one, I, this, to me seemed pretty straightforward. I mean, I, I didn't really have any objections or concerns with this, this update. Uh, made, it made pretty good sense. Were there any other, yeah?
So my question is, is there a protocol for, do we generally, if we have a situation like this, do we generally change the zoning to match what the other part of the city code says or do we generally change the other part of the city code to match zoning? Just, I've not gone through this before, so is there a general way to do it? Do we wanna do it so that it impacts the fewest businesses? If we have a business that's impacted by this, do they get grandfathered? Just kind of?
The, the best way, um, Chair Reed, Commissioner Ellis, uh, to look at it is typically, and we can get into some of the very specifics wi- within this, um, we're looking to align it with something that would be statutorily referenced because a lot of times when you're cleaning up code, you find that codes have been adopted with a, a fixed number or something in there that may be referenced a previous statutory reference or some other jurisdiction that says, you know, thou shalt be fifty feet and if fifty lives in there, uh, moving towards a practice that's referencing through an attribution to that statute so that you don't have to constantly be checking back and forth. So to your question, in this case, this would be aligning it with what our liquor license, um, provisions already are under licensing, um, portion of the city code, which is already in place to design what we, uh, need to do through state statute from a liquor standpoint.
Is there any current, I guess, establishments? I'm trying to think of all the places that you can have adult beverages in the city.
Well, I don't think Last Tortillas fits with this one.
Well, and that, this is where it came up, was when we had Last Tortillas come through. We changed their liquor license, the liquor license rule because, you know, they have theirs kind of separate.
Yep.
And then I don't know if we, how it, we noticed it because another restaurant, good news, uh, asked about it. Um, and then we, that's how we saw the difference, but that's really, Last Tortillas was kind of the one that was the differentiator when we thought, uh, because it feels like the uninterrupted enclosure is really, uh, feels like something for a drinking establishment of which we really don't have. They're all restaurants here, we don't have clubs, it's not Cowboy Jack's or Wild Bill's or whatever, like on, on forty-two in Apple Valley where people are, you wanna make sure they don't go wandering with their drinks. Um, we don't really have those nor do we really allow those in the city. Uh, so allowing the city more flexibility in reviewing the patio would make it easier for more interesting places for people to go and eat and drink outside.
What about like fireside? Cause that's kind of got a front patio.
And, and that one's fully enclosed because it was older and under that older language.
Yeah, and the intention behind this, this discussion or this recommendation specifically, wherever possible within the code, we're always looking to peel back something that's either overly complex or complicated or, or maybe it's missing a common sense application based on how projects are currently developing. Um, we captured, I, I feel we capture a lot of that with the, the major zoning code rewrite that we went through for, um, you know, the past couple of years. So these are little kind of cleanup pieces that staff has witnessed or kind of known in there, so, um, certainly open any feedback on any of this stuff, but the, the intent is to make it cleaner, simpler, more easily to, um, adhere to and to prescribe to people who are doing these types of projects in the community.
And then if we have a situation where we have a business that's currently existing that was properly permitted and then we change, do we pull the lureg out from under them? Do they have primary non-conforming use? How does that work?
Well, this one is, makes it a little.
Less restrictive.
Less restrictive because it would be allowing them to have a compact and contiguous area, um, quarantined by an appropriate fence wall or staff monitor as approved by city staff versus.
Okay, so I was thinking we were going the other direction.
Nope.
Nope, so we're getting a little less.
So we're going from.
We wanna put the one on the right, we wanna make that.
We're going from B to one.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I misunderstood.
Where you don't have to necessarily go through the, the establishment.
Yeah.
Okay. I misunderstood the direction we were going.
We're trying to make it easier.
Yeah. Cause you were talking.
No, yes.
I thought this was making it harder.
We generally work in the opposite way.
You were talking.
You have patios.
I don't understand.
That's probably why I was getting that reaction from you, like.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm not saying. No, we're trying to make it sound.
I was misunderstanding.
And I should have had him flunked.
Yeah. Maybe I need my cheaters.
So changing something like this with the current contract, with the current establishment, is there a legal thing that we will have to get updated signatures from them in their party?
For their liquor licensing?
Yes.
No, no, we wouldn't have.
So they don't, they just have to be notified about the change or?
Yeah, I mean, mostly, I guess it, it would impact them where we would say, okay, by the, now you can open your patio up. Um, there, there would be, they would be more in conformance with the code with the proposed changes than, than not. So maybe a courtesy to let them know that they could.
I think it's kind of less restrictive because, you know, like Last Tortillas, for example, you know, they converted part of their parking lot into a patio and it looks great and, but they would not have been able to do that with item B.
Yeah.
I agree.
Sounds like we have got some sort of consensus.
Some consensus on that one then? All right. All right, we will move on to our next topic of discussion, which will be section eleven-six-three, principal uses, commercial. So that specific use we are looking at is commercial event centers. Um, so currently, um, oh, this one didn't update. Okay, so we're looking at potentially amending standards three and four. Unfortunately, number three is not highlighted in red for some reason. Um, but staff wanted to get the commission's consensus on, on their thoughts on allowing for more than two-hundred guests, uh, instead of the maximum two-hundred, allowing that for an increase. And then also looking at potentially changing standard number three, um, so that the owner-operator would not have to have their primary residence on the actual, um, commercial event center site. So.
So a little bit of context for this one, the code was updated to allow for this use, and I can't remember, maybe Commissioner Reed was on the commission that time, maybe Rivera, uh, but, uh, it was really to allow owners of farmsteads who maybe have a nice barn on their property and a, in a scenic area to, um, make use of it as an event venue, like a wedding farm. You know, I'm, I'm sure some of you have seen those around. Um, so when we did that update to the code to allow for that use, we looked at other cities' ordinances and that's how we landed on these, um, standards. Um, I think we maybe have add, added a couple or, or right-sized them for Rosemount, but, um, we have gotten a couple questions about specifically three and four. Would the city allow more than two-hundred guests? And does the owner of the business have to live on the property? Um, and so that's why we're bringing it to you, to get some feedback on how you feel about both of those standards and if any changes could be made. Um, I think staff is pretty ambivalent about it, but we're bringing it to you because we have received those inquiries.
Certainly a shift in kind of maybe the origin of a commercial event center, but, you know, to expand a little bit on Anthony's point there too, and even, you know, from the previous item and what I've heard from some residents, we are becoming a, a more built-out suburban community with more demands for certain types of services and this is one that continues to pop up. So with, with that, just kind of being a little bit of a backdrop, the guardrails that are currently in place that are before you are really meant to restrict kind of, um, how, how and how many people, um, utilize that property. Is it, is it appropriate for the city to look at expanding that, opening that up for more of a regional audience or is it kind of fine as it, as it is with a, kind of a right-sized approach within the current code?
I think if the, if the facility is able to hold more than two-hundred people, based on, you know, what the building permit says or whatnot, if it's, if the capacity is more than two-hundred, then I don't see why we would limit that, that structure to that if it's able to hold more.
It was an, it was an intensity, um, number that I have to make some assumptions cause I didn't, we didn't write.
Two-hundred and one people get a little unruly.
Well, that's the nature of a zoning code. I mean, one, one is okay and one is not apparently on.
Is the two-hundred though tied to occupancy or is it just, it's more about sizing based on influx of people into agricultural areas?
It could be looked at as both. I mean, so if you have existing structures on there, you're gonna have capacities based on, you know, um, you know, fire code requirements. Um, at some point, somebody has to say, you know, two-hundred is the right number or one-fifty or something else. But then what you would also start hearing or types of questions we get is, well, do you, can you, should there be a consolidation of some of the buildings? Is it now transitioning from an old farm with a couple of outbuildings or something into something that is being designed with intention as a commercial event center meant to accommodate a larger number of, of guests? So. or something else. But then what you would also start hearing, or types of questions we get is, well, do you, can you, should there be a consolidation of some of the buildings? Is it now transitioning from an old farm with a couple of outbuildings or something into something that is being designed with intention as a commercial event center meant to accommodate a larger number of, of guests? So Commissioner Rivera, maybe to your, your question on there, it's kind of both. There's not a magic number in there, but I would, you know, suggest that two hundred was meant to be at something that is containable with a certain level of comfort with how the code was, was previously written. From a staff perspective, honestly, three and four are a little challenging to enforce. We do consider enforceability when we start talking through code amendments or existing codes in there. Somebody actually having to physically live there, yes, you can prove that or disprove it, but anytime you're talking about some of those types of things, it's always a little challenging to then
I, again, I, on that number three item, I, I would disagree that the property owner has to live there. What if I want to buy this as an investment property, and I want to expand it, and, you know, have weddings and all kinds of cool stuff out there, but I have a different residence somewhere else that I am happy with, so I, I think that restricts that.
Or I want to move away, because I want quiet on my Saturday nights.
Right.
Well, and I think part of it is, then, if it's the owner that lives there, they have a vested interest in ensuring that the operation is not out of control, I think is one, one of the intents of that one. I would also, I would ask the commission, if, so the intent was, someone owns a farmstead and they, they want to do weddings out of it. Is it, is it okay with you all that someone buys a property and then builds a big building on it just for weddings? And also, just know that commercial event centers are, right now, in the code, only allowed in the agricultural district, because that's where this use started. And is that still, and I think it's actually east of Blaine.
East of seventy, that's what I question is.
It's County Route forty-seven-one.
What's County Route seventy-one?
Blaine.
Blaine.
So, I mean, you were kind of going where I'm thinking. I mean, so, conceptually, the idea of some, have somebody having a farmstead and side business making use of it to do, you know, events is a great idea. If we were to get rid of line item out, number three, for example, could somebody have, like, buy a plot, agricultural plot, and to your point, build like a convention center that can hold, we were saying, two hundred people, two hundred people, and they just have, suddenly it's a business that's built there, they don't live there, it's really specifically a business in the middle of an agricultural area, that, that opens that up for that kind of scenario, correct?
Yeah, and I think that's kind of the crux of this discussion, that the guardrails that are currently in place employ a certain type of character on what that property looks like, versus you take a few, one or two of those guardrails off, does it change the character to something that's outside of the comfort of the
Character is the perfect word, because it's, to me, it feels like, this is like, this is kind of like a rural kind of thing, you know, a really nice way to approach, and in harmony maybe with what's out there and other plots that are around, this specific plot for a convention center.
I just don't want there to be like a backdoor to where somebody can make a, essentially a commercial residence with, or a commercial property without it really being a commercial property, like with, they're not, and I think the intent on number three was that, why they say the same individual has to be on the residence, so that it's not just like, hey, I'm going to offload this to somebody else, they're going to use it, we're going to construct this big facility.
And, and that's exactly the questions that we're getting.
Well, or I look at it a different way, like, again, I'm investor, and I hire someone to manage this facility, and, you know, they don't necessarily have to live there either, but they're there at the events, or they manage, you know, the aspect of it. I, I kind of, I don't know if any of you have been to Eau Claire? I was at Eau Claire at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and they have this new kind of facility, and it is kind of out in the middle of rural, but they've turned it into this beautiful event center. Have you guys been there? No? Anybody?
Liz might have, she's from Eau Claire.
This is from Eau Claire. It's just like south of town, it's, they have like, they're kind of having to start having concerts and things, too, but it's a beautiful facility.
And Julia went to one this weekend.
Yeah, and I mean, there's one similar as well in Northfield where I live, in Red Barn. That's a big attraction, people go down there, so there's
So the concern is that we allow something, and then the neighbors, as far away as they may be, are like, what the heck? Now we have this event, commercial event center on our dirt road with four hundred people coming every three days, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So those are the things that we have to think about, too.
I, personally, I feel like, and, and, yeah, you can't necessarily manage this to the letter, but it's the intent. I think number three, I like the way three is, and I don't think we should change that. Number four, the two hundred, I think there could be a little bit of flexibility there, whether it's just, you know, they kind of do it on the side, that they're going to have two hundred and twenty-five, and they're not looking for approval, or we could bump that up a little bit, but I wouldn't want to go too much higher than that.
If we have, I'd personally get rid of both three and four, but that's my free property rights side. If we keep number three, can that kind of mitigate number four? You know, if we have somebody who has to live there.
And what can they tolerate?
Then what, you know, I mean, that's, they're not going to have six hundred people there Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights if they have to live there. They obviously could, who knows, right? Who knows what people are going to do, but
Well, it does keep a residential property on the site.
It does keep the residential property on the site, so I'm wondering if, if we keep three, then four, we can, you know, maybe take the number piece out and just say, you know, as approved by the city based on the size, you know, the character of the property, something along those lines, I think. Sounds like everybody, possible exception
Four, four kind of already allows that, larger number of guests
It sets a current maximum, and then you have the ability to pursue an exception.
Yeah.
Because if I'm going to live on there and I'm going to market my venue, you know, the first thing that someone that's going to have their daughter's wedding there is like, well, how many does it hold, or how many can I have? You know, you have to be willing and ready to answer that, and let me ask the city, hold on, let me get back to you. Like, so you have to kind of have that ready to go when you're marketing your facility.
Some people are looking for a four, a five hundred person event, and some are looking for a one hundred person.
Let's say, let's go with the number.
Just because I live on the property doesn't mean it's not loud and unruly, just as if I had a manager that, you know, managed it, but nobody lived on the property. I mean, you can go both ways.
So let's say we take the numbers out, think about a five hundred. Who's going to be responsible for managing the parking and the traffic? Five hundred will be a lot of traffic, too. So at some point, if something happens in that area, are they going to blame the city, saying the city didn't have any limit?
So, could the city set a limit? Like, so if somebody brought this to us, all right, so let's work through how, because I don't know how this would work, right? So somebody has a, currently a farm with a big old barn, and they no longer have cattle, and they've cleaned it all out, and it no longer smells like my grandparents' farms did.
And they install sprinklers.
And they install sprinklers, and they go through all this, and then they come to us and they say, I've got this thing, and I think it can support three hundred and fifty people. Could we set the, could the permitting process, to your point, set the maximum number, so that we wouldn't, they wouldn't be coming to the city every, every quarter to say how many can support?
Yeah, I mean, you can take measurements and see how many bodies it can hold.
Yeah.
It's a conditional use, so they would have to get a conditional use permit.
And then, so that a condition, conditional use permit could say, the limit for this property is three fifty, and we have to come up with some guidelines for whatever that, that was, or how we set those numbers.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, part of the, the thought, too, as any zoning code update or discussion or rewrite, you always want to consider hypotheticals, typically outside of what we're typically doing as, as a body here, looking at legislative, you know, decisions on here. So hypothetically, you could have a piece of property that somehow they want to then further improve it to handle additional guests on the piece of property. You know, is that then, then allowed through there if they meet? Now we're back looking at a site plan or something like that, and is it still a house? If they, well, we just want to put another shed over here. Well, look, now we can actually accommodate more guests on the property, it's
And how much do you want to review with those exceptional requests by the staff? If the requests come on a day, I need that for the next weekend, how are we determining that if you don't have a guideline?
There's a lot of ways to look at it, which is why we're having that discussion tonight.
I just don't think, I, I'm, I'm still not convinced that the site owner has to live on site to be their primary resident. I'm, I'm not, I'm personally not sold on that.
How do you then keep somebody from essentially flipping it commercial?
No, you can say this is designated as an event center property, but it's not necessarily that the owner has to live there. Like, they can manage it from the other side of seventy-one, or, you know, they don't necessarily, I, I live over here, but I own this property, or I purchased this property, and I want to expand it and have an event center. It's my business, it's my primary investment property, and why do I have to live there on that property?
But this, we're talking agricultural, right? So, and so this is going to be in the middle of an agricultural area, surrounded by agricultural residents.
Yeah, and I look at the one in Farmington that used to be a furniture store, and he has made it into a beautiful event center, south of town here, and it is in the middle of agriculture.
But if, if somebody were to come to the city and say, I want to build an event center, what would you tell them the zoning would be? Or what zoning areas are they allowed?
Well, we say agriculture.
Yeah.
Only agriculture right now.
Right now, yep, yep. And, and also, you know, talking about commercial businesses in agriculture, farm, farm wineries are allowed, and we don't require an owner to be on there. Breweries are allowed in, in the egg district, and we don't allow owners there. There's some other commercial, there's agricultural uses that they don't live on either, and it's just the farm buildings.
The land and
So I guess, you know, I, I think the, also, what's the reality of these kinds of businesses coming? We, we've got questions. There's one, only one in operation right now. It's not even the people that came to us originally for the code update, but they found it to be fiscally insurmountable to convert, to convert the barn to be used. But there is another one, so that's just one within the city.
Didn't we previously in the code also move the geographical boundary
Yeah.
Where these things are, too?
Yeah.
Because they used to be able to be located.
Used to be east of Emery.
We amended it with that one back in twenty-two. They came forward with the CUP for commercial event center, and we did change, because it, we had to move it to Blaine, because it was
Yeah, it was originally Emery was the cutoff. We changed it to Blaine, because there is a property, so the one that, that is operating is on Pine Bend Trail, Genesis Ranch up by Spring Lake Park.
Yep.
So that's the only one that's in operation, and we felt like, because it was up there, there's no one around, the, the, the Emery Avenue delineation didn't really make sense.
Too far east.
Hypothetical, then, so let's say there's a piece of agricultural land, and, and I, like, I want to, I want to build an event center, I want, I want to create a business, and I want to build a new building there. What approval processes would that have to go through before they could actually open it up as a business and event center?
They would need a conditional use permit and a site plan review, and then liquor license and things like
Building permits and everything.
Building permits and all that.
What else?
The conditional use permit would go to who?
To planning commission and council. And we would review it against the conditions.
Would that be before the building?
The nineteen.
Built, oh.
Yep. They would have to show us what they were building. But if, if there isn't a condition that says it must look like a barn, or it must be agricultural in character, then they could build kind of whatever they want as far as
They could build Wild Bill's saloon, you did comment earlier.
Yeah. Or
Or the three-story building, fancy building.
Yeah, and within the building height maximums of the egg district, but I also, business owners that are looking to build something like that in an agricultural area are probably likely to play up that agricultural setting.
So it makes them appealing. You don't site a hotel in the middle of a cornfield, you know, with a typical pool and convention room in there, it's
The ballroom.
Which is, I mean, like, North Twenty is a perfect example. I mean, the scenery that people go like, to sit out on the deck and have a beer and just enjoy it.
Now, you do remember the, the approval process for that, right?
Oh, yeah, it was grueling, but I think everybody has embraced it and welcomed it, so, you know, good for the city of Rosemount.
I, I don't know if all the neighbors around
I think most, you know, I think, I'm hearing some of the neighbors are some of the, the frequent visitors there.
Well, in, with North Twenty, I guess, one of the things we heard was that, you know, people are parking on the street and things like that, and if there's not a capacity, you know, number put in place, or if there's not enough parking.
We can handle that with just the second half of the sentence, though. We take out the two hun, the two hundred, and then that's part of the, that's part of the conditional use permit.
The number of guests are
This site is limited to this number of guests.
So we're not having a set number, but it, it, a set number will be provided at some point.
They would have to talk, how many people would fit.
Based on each property.
And it's just like a restaurant or any other business coming in, and we say, okay, well, this needs this amount of parking.
Yeah.
And it's not a perfect science
Yeah.
either.
Essentially, there's a way to write language to prescribe whatever you want, so, you know, maybe shifting the, the thought or the conversation to what, what the, what you would like the outcome to be, and then language can be crafted to help achieve that outcome.
For me, the only thing that's important is the second half of sentence four, which is to say, on the conditional use permit, based on the character of the land, that, you know, how close we are to other farms. I mean, if they've got to drive past six, you know, it is different sites, like you say, Genesis Ranch is out there next to the park and not in next to anything else. The same size plot, we might approve something that's more, just because it's a less intensive area around it, right? I mean, so for me, that's the only important part of three and four, is the second half of four.
I've come around on that point, and so I think I, I feel more comfortable eliminating three, based on the other approval hooks that we've got in place. We'd see this and be able to review it and give comments, like, we don't have anything ugly happening now in our city here.
And worst-case scenario, it's in the farms, it'll just be developed for housing in thirty, forty years.
And they'll see a crowd of people coming back.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't joke, because we are still on
Make sure that's in the minutes.
I do think that is some, some good discussion and some good direction, and staff can take that back and start to craft some language, or think about some language that we can bring forward.
I've been holding it back for the next one, guys, you know that.
All right, moving on to our two final ones, which will be in regards to landscaping and screening and buffering standards. So we'll start with parking lot landscaping. So currently in the zoning code, trees that are required as part of the parking lot landscaping is also required in addition to the trees that are required for the site development area as well. So staff is recommending that the commission consider including parking lot trees as part of the, as part of the overall landscaping requirement instead of an addition to, because it ends up being, from what staff has seen, it ends up being a lot
Well, it's confusing for developers
Yes.
First of all, there, it's, it's confusing for them to understand, because the landscaping requirement and the parking lot landscaping are kind of in different spots.
Yes.
So what staff would like to do is allow the parking lot trees to be included in the count, because you're still required to plant a certain number of trees based on how big the site is. It would just simply say, and if you have a parking lot this size, this many of those trees, it need to be planted in the parking lot area, if that makes sense.
So would, would we ever run into a situation where they've got no trees in parking, and they've heavily loaded on the perimeter, for example, that we'd be concerned about that?
Well, they would still have to put trees in the parking lot.
Yeah.
It's just if they're required to put ten parking lot trees in, so say, the, based on the site, they have to plant a hundred trees, and then the parking lot on the site requires ten
In addition.
In addition, so then, instead of saying, well, you actually have to, you, you gave us a hundred trees, or you gave us a hundred trees, but because ten of them are in the parking lot, that doesn't count, you have to add ten more elsewhere.
I think a tree, in my opinion, a tree is a tree, and I, I support just having it count towards that.
I do, too.
Based on the size still, and that's, it would just be easier for developers and us to
It simplifies it a little bit.
Where it was like, we, we just have to throw as many trees as we can wherever there was land, and, and I think this helps to
Do we know how other cities treat this? Are we currently doing what everybody else does, and this would be an improvement for us, or are we behind the curve and everybody else is doing it this new way?
That is something staff will have to look into.
We would certainly do the research, and, and when we bring it back for actual adoption, give you an idea of what other cities have.
Perfect.
We're certainly not trying to be like wildly
No, but I, I would also suggest, too, that we, we shouldn't be afraid to be a leader in any of these topics as well.
Right, that's what I was going to say, why do we have to follow what other
And as we went through our comprehensive
More concerned that we're behind.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been contacted by a lot of cities asking how our process went, what we did, and, you know, because we were able to we did and, you know, because we were able to right-size and modernize a lot of stuff within a very complex zoning code, so just keeping that out there, we, we do like to do our due diligence and check with others too, but.
Yeah, I'm more concerned, like you said, that, I don't care if we're on the leading edge as long as we just think things through, I just rather not be behind.
All right, last topic of discussion, again landscaping and buffering, so this time we're speaking more specifically to screening. So staff would like to commission and consider amending the code so that landscaping is, if landscaping is used for screening, it must consist of coniferous trees and shrubs and eliminate the specific opacity level for this method of screening. As we have been running into, at least with some commercial projects, concerns with, in regards to just specifically opacity-related screening standards, so.
So I, I've got an immediate reaction to this, which is thumbs down, but I want to understand why, why is it a problem? What is it?
We don't know how to measure opacity is what it is. We don't really know how to measure or enforce that or when you ask and say, are you, is it gonna meet ninety percent opacity? Using landscaping, we don't know what that means, how to do it. You know, they, they use pine trees and coniferous plants to meet that, but with that ninety percent in there, we don't know how to.
Yeah, but if you look at St. Joseph's, my favorite example, right? And you look at the, it'd be the eastern side of the solar farm that's, it was supposed to be ninety percent, it's not even fifty percent, right? So, and they're coniferous trees, so I, I don't think that either one of these is working.
And all those trees died, so they're starting all over again.
That, that, they only were required to have ninety percent from public rights of way and I know that the commission wanted to add that ninety percent all the way around, but that was beyond what the code requires.
Public rights of way, meaning?
The, there's a couple corners, roads that you can see it from.
Okay, so that's what I'm talking about. So right off of Birchwood, it's this, it's wide open there, which kind of maybe a discussion item is, because we talked about doing like a zoning czar kind of, or some kind of zoning board or review board or something, but separate topic. I, I don't think, I, I do not support just changing it this way. I think we have to have something that's a little bit more enforceable that really, whether it's ninety percent, I know it's hard to mention that, of course, but as a guideline, that's not bad. So how do you, how do you have a guideline that you can use that really does create a level of opacity that can block from people that are up against it or, you know, public rights of way?
A guideline that then transitions into an expected outcome. Because I think that's where we keep kind of hearing that there are some misses, there are some challenges in there is, here's the expectation of an outcome and it's not being felt like that's being met by how the code is currently written and is in enforceable or unenforceable in, in a certain measure in there.
Well, again, in that circumstance that he's referring to, because we kind of live in that same area, so I know exactly what you're talking about, those trees, they all died and they had to replant them all again. So I think that's what kind of, what we brought up too is, you can have this expectation all you want, but then if something happens, what is the alternative to remedy that? So are you gonna plant more trees? Are you gonna plant trees that are more disease resistant or is, you know, someone gonna manage the, the trees till a certain point till they have to replant them? So maybe that's something that needs to be put in there instead is, you know.
Well, we, we did update the, didn't we update it to say it must be maintained?
Like for a year, I think, or something like, I thought.
And another thing that, you know, that's all, that's always one year, for sure.
It's always one year, yeah.
Another thing to think about too in terms of, I'm trying to draw a connection between prescribing a code and then getting, achieving an outcome, because I really think that's what we're, we're trying to, to get to here. So a lot of, a lot of city codes, ours included, not on a coniferous tree side, but on a deciduous tree side, they prescribe specific caliber inches be planted as part of it. This is typically in a new residential subdivision, you know, as a part of the tree on the site, you can't just put a little twig in the ground and say, yep, met my, met my tree standard.
And we do have that for coniferous trees also.
Yep, height, I think.
Yeah, it's height.
Height, height down there. But the idea behind that is that you're, you're, you're requiring on the front end a landscaper or a developer to plant something that is deemed acceptable at that time and will mature over a period of time. So whether it's, I don't know what the height of our coniferous plantings is, if it's six feet. Or an inch and a half caliper tree of a deciduous tree on there versus a half inch or a whipper, you know, something like that. That's where a lot of those standards have, have arisen from in the past. It's not solving, I think, exactly what we're talking about right now, but that's something that's historically been prescribed in landscape plans to help move towards achieving that outcome, because otherwise, if you don't have those types of things in place, you plant, you know, a pine tree that's this tall and you plant something that's as big as this pin in there and say, yep, I'm, I met the code and you guys in city council and everybody will say, well, that's not what we're trying to do here because we don't want to wait twenty years to get to a, a preferred level of opacity or, you know, screening from, from whatever's being built.
I do think you need to have something that, I mean, whether, I know you can't necessarily measure that maybe, like the ninety percent, but at least communicates the expectation in the code, whereas if you take that out, then you just open it up to where there's nothing really enforceable.
Or we just require that you had X number of coniferous trees every seven, you know, every seven feet that were of a certain, like you say, caliper. And it just, we shift to something that's more, that's more countable and you can look at and you can say, yes, we did this. We just have to figure out what that level would be, right?
Yeah, I think the problem is when we have a, you know, we have a landscape plan and the car wash was a good example where it seemed pretty robust and the screening, you know, they had coniferous trees along the drive aisle, but then the, the question came up, is it ninety percent opacity and is it meeting ninety percent opacity? And I don't, I don't know. Other than planting more trees.
Of a mixed variety so that you can essentially, you know.
Stagger.
Yeah, stagger, they grow together or you're mixing.
I mean, burning walls and fences can also be used too. But I don't know that we want walls and fences.
And, and I think what, what we're hearing and Chair Reed, I, I, you know, specifically understand, you know, your, your perspective and where you're coming from there. I think this would be a good one for staff to take this one back and, and look at some other communities, see if they've kind of solved this or cracked that nut, because I, I can certainly see where the disconnect is there or what we're trying to achieve and if there's a different way that through a prescriptive method could help us achieve this type of a screening that's being expected with, within a development like this. So I, if, if you guys think that's fair, otherwise we can talk through some other options, but.
I don't think we need to solve it right now, I mean, it's good discussion.
I don't think we can solve it right now.
Yeah, I think it's creative ideas, that's, that's good.
You're right, just keeping in mind what the, what the expected or the hopeful outcome is.
And I mean, maybe even just changing the learn, the wording that, that if, if, if landscaping is used for screening, it must consist of coniferous trees and shrubs with the goal of meeting ninety percent opacity, you know, maybe that language.
We can play with the words, I think, I think we understand what we ought the outcome to be. Again, this is just a discussion because this is something that staff has observed is challenging both on the design side and then as from the after it's all installed side too.
Go back to the event center one real quick. I just had one quick question on that. Did number five and six need to be looked at in regards to what we were talking about with the liquor, outdoor liquor and, and kind of going in line?
We can check that, but.
It looks pretty pervasive. I think the, the idea was that it's out in the country and people might want to walk around the grounds.
Yeah.
Glass of wine there.
Look at the flowers or something.
Which is different from if you've heard of the term social district in, in certain cities and.
Well, into a manure pit maybe if it's a real farm.
All right, and that was last of discussion.
All right, no other items for discussion?
Nope, that's, that is it.
All right. Chair, we say tonight, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.